This evening, we just have a work session for the Planning Commission. That will be an initiation of a text amendment regarding site plans. Before we get started, I would just like to welcome our two new commissioners. We have Christine Salick, welcome. And we have James Bentley, welcome. This is a really good meeting as a first meeting because it's purely informative. It's just an informal discussion. So we don't have any matters for voting this evening. So this is a great, great start. And with that, I will turn it over to Wally for a discussion.
Well, I would like to introduce Laura Noos. She's our newest environmental compliance officer.
Thank you, welcome.
Noos.
Noos.
Laura Noos?
Noos.
Noos. Nice to meet you.
Not Noos, but Noos.
Like the Noos River.
How do you spell your last name?
N-U-S-Z.
N-U-S-Z. Welcome.
You get a lot on that in Scrabble.
We look forward to working with you, Laura. Thank you.
Okay. This is really, tonight, it's just the initiation of a text amendment. We could actually discuss. But this is pursuant to strategy number 21. It states that the city needs to review and update cities. To ensure coherence, clarity, and compliance with current law and development practices. These ordinances have stayed basically unchanged for a long time, even state code has changed. State code does supersede them. So we've been going by state code, but we need to get our own ordinance to be compliant with state code. And to that effect, you'll notice all through this document, my additions are in blue and language to be deleted or moved noted in red. Hopefully that helps you read through this, although I realize that it can be confusing after a while. I have embedded this through the city attorney and city manager. I did add a section entitled lighting in there.
Sorry, you added what?
A section entitled lighting.
Lighting.
Yes. Put in there, which basically, we sort of had the bare bones of it already in the site plan ordinance when we talked about parking. But I have been requesting photometric maps and foot candle values of no more than a half a foot candle at property lines. And, yeah, but it seems to be standard practice. I mean, .5 foot candle is essentially the industry standard, which I guess you can think of a foot candle or two foot candles as being maybe a dimly lit parking lot. A foot candle at the property line would be, well, a quarter, a half a foot candle would be about a fourth of that. So it's pretty low-key lighting. And then the idea is not to spill over direct lighting onto the neighbors. So, anyway, with that out of the way. A large part of what I did here was just reformat, reordered some of the sections. And that's because when I first read through the site plan ordinance, there's so many wheres and wherefores in it that it got kind of confusing. I mean, when is the site plan required? When is it not required? So I attempted to kind of bifurcate that a little bit to talk about when one is required. And then the sections all in sort of one general region of the ordinance where they're not required. And the purpose of that was not to have, you know, little gotcha paragraphs all through the ordinance that can, that can kind of throw you off. So that's really what's going on in Article One by and large. When you look at Section 101, the short title, I did add some language. It is Appendix C, so you could certainly refer to it as Appendix C as well as the same.
Just make sure to speak into your microphone. There you go.
And I mumbled it. So, and I browsed through this pretty good when you sent an email, but is there any, like, did it send a bucketized list of what major changes were to say, well, I made?
Well, we could certainly go.
I made 10 spelling corrections, so we're probably good on that. I made five critical things.
Well, I mean, I think I could sum it up by saying, and I can get more explicit about this, like I did with the PUD ordinances, you'll remember, which, you know, I planned on doing, you know, between now and then next month when we next meet. But essentially, you have some formatting changes. That's number one. Number two, and those formatting changes are for clarity. But there are also some language changes that are there to ensure that we adhere to state code. We got to adhere to state code anyway, but I wanted to, I'd as well reflect that.
I got it too with your email.
I got it. I'll let you continue. I just didn't see anything in here that, like you said, didn't, you know, do.
Okay. No, the general idea is to go through these ordinances and essentially try to get our legal language right. And then if we think there's some material changes, like there probably will be in the next few months in our zoning ordinance and even our erosion settlement control ordinance, we may need to make some substantive changes there to comply with state code. And of course, we got to get that. But.
So, Wally, sorry to interject. So in other words, the changes that we're proposing right here, they're an editorial nature. They're not a substantive.
I would say they're editorial nature. There's very little added. Like I said, lighting was added. And we took out some things like conditional approval. You know, Planning Commission really, as we go more and more, the state is requiring and really actually demanding that there be less and less scrutiny of these site plans. Not that we don't scrutinize it. We do. We rinse it, you know, we squeeze it every which way but loose. But the idea is to be more development friendly.
Yeah, if you, oh, God. I was just gonna say, it would be helpful, if you wouldn't mind then, when you kind of go through these changes, say, oh, this is just editorially, or we did this for a state change. That would be so helpful. Thank you.
Not, not a problem.
I think one thing that confused me a little bit is that the site plan ordinance of the city, because whereas Appendix C, everything is now referred to as an appendix versus an article. But yet it says Article One in general, so I kind of got lost a little bit in that.
Well, it's a separate ordinance. The site plan ordinance is Appendix C, and as such, it begins with the Article One. I mean, you're not looking at the zoning subdivision code. You're strictly the site plan ordinance. Now, the site plan ordinance is tied to the zoning a little bit inasmuch that it's administered by the zoning administrator, but also handles the zoning ordinance as well. And when you get into things like variances and things of that nature, really, the allowances are made through the zoning ordinance. Although you could, in theory, ask for a variance for at least some of this, as long as you were not a spec.
Well, I mean, why do we feel necessary to change it to Appendix C instead of just leaving it as Article One?
Well, it is Appendix C. In our, in our, in our ordinances, it's called Appendix C. I mean, if you want, I mean, Appendix C is the site plan ordinance.
Oh, I see. Cut of ordinances, Appendix C. Article One in general, okay. That, to me, was very confusing.
It is a little confusing. I mean, we've got Appendix A, B, C, and D. It is a little bit, kind of like juggling balls after a while.
What were the three asterisks? What is it?
Three asterisks and can't change or formatting.
In front of Appendix, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. There was.
Yeah.
On that, what was that again? The three asterisks?
Right. Three asterisks or two, where there's either a revision or some kind of a change or formatting change could be the order.
So it probably would be good to have a copy of the original, so we can really see what is being changed. Because that was confusing as well when I saw that. It was like, so I'm looking down here for those, and I didn't, couldn't see anything, so.
All right. We can do that.
And this is not intended as criticism. It's just mouth on mine.
Really, after lighting, now, this lighting has been called from a number of different ordinances elsewhere. We had some discussion on the staff level as to when and when it should not apply.
Where is that? I'm sorry, Wally, where?
Lighting is on page six of 20 or seven of 20.
Six of 20 and seven of 20?
Six of 20. And really begins in earnest in seven of 20.
My lighting plan.
Now, this is, this is new, to be clear. This is a new, a new section of the ordinance. If you remember when we did the Plan Unit Development Ordinance, I mentioned that we had some wording in there in terms of lighting, and we said we would get that when we got to the site plan ordinance. Well, this is the site plan ordinance. So lighting plans required for all non-residential and multifamily uses, including lighting for non-residential uses within residential subdivisions. Let's say you had a community tennis court or a community swimming pool. You know, you're going to have lighting for that, so regulations would be there. Spillover is .5 foot candles, which I will hopefully have some good examples for you next time on pictures as far as really what .5 foot candles looks like. Because, I mean, it's a, it's a very abstract kind of thing. I will say this, though. You can measure foot candles. You can't really measure stuff that we mentioned in other parts of the ordinance.
Wally, can you tell me what, a photometric plan, is that basically just a kind of a CAD model with lighting footprints on it?
Actually, it is very much like that. It's a, it's a plan of the overall lighting of the site. In other words, your streetlights or your parking lights. Streetlights, but your parking lights, you'll have high foot candle values based where these are, and they'll trail off from there until they're either picked up by another lot or they fill off property. So that's what we're really talking about right there.
And these, is this part of state code is what we're, is this a replication of the state code that you've got here?
No, we are enabled under state code to regulate things like lighting, and we've never really regulated it before. So.
The state doesn't regulate that?
State does not regulate, no. We have permission to regulate.
Okay.
We've done so in a limited fashion so far. There is a section in the current site plan ordinance that talks very briefly about downward directionally shielded light for use in parking lots. But we've never gotten to the point where we regulate how much light.
I mean, this, this, you know, foot candle, I don't really understand how much light a foot candle is. Foot candle plots are arranged in a uniform 10-foot by 10-foot grid pattern. I mean, how is that criteria established? Or is that, is that typical for parking?
Well, a lighting engineer will typically.
It's what, I'm sorry?
A lighting engineer will typically prepare that. Like I say, I've been asking for that on site plans and on the legacy plans. I've been asking for that.
10 by 10 grids?
10 by 10 grids. Yes.
Is that just, so, that's just for the plots, though, right? So that's the grid pattern of the plot to show. So that's not saying we have to have a light 10 by 10. That's the plot grid, yeah.
No. And, and your plots, a lot of the areas that are plotted will get pretty close to zero, particularly at the property lines, but even within the parking lot between lights. You know, you can, you can see the dark in there. In fact, and I'm not trying to pick on the legacy because they've done a fine job, but I know when we first saw that, we noticed dark areas on the photometric map right where some of the private roads and alleys were. And our concern immediately was, well, why don't you put some lights there? You're going to have people driving in dark along these 20-foot alleyways. And, you know, that's, that's not what, what I would call adequate lighting. And of course, they agreed and they changed it. But, but that's an example of what we're talking about. It can be too dark or it can be too light. It can be too bright as well.
Who determines that? Whether it's too light or too bright?
Well, photometric, photometric plan determines that, and you use the measurement of .5 foot candle.
So is this something new? Or I thought in the first.
It's new for PCOS. It's not new for anybody else.
It's packet. Site plan ordinance. We know what impact, like, if we did it today, what impact would it have?
We would require it on all new plans that we get.
Any new subdivision, multifamily?
Any new site plans that we receive will have to adhere to.
Well, if they have.
I guess what I would like to know is, is this standard criteria for surrounding localities? Is this higher, lower, somewhere in between?
No, that's just standard operating.
So it is standard with, among that locale, other localities around?
Yes, it is.
And I think, I think it's, helps to clarify that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the section, or the two, the section two, this is basically just a unit of measure of what's going to be presented to you essentially.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just, that, that's all. So it's not saying you can have lights, can't have lights. It's just the plan that you provide will have this unit of measure.
Right. And in fact, most places are going to have lights these days, because, you know, there are always security concerns and that.
I guess I do this delivering a carrier. We have a required photometric survey of all the spaces of the ship. And that's a very tough test, so. But if it's moving forward, you know.
Well.
What about the tools to, you know, do that?
Well, I mean, obviously, we'll have, have a way to measure foot. And there is a machine or a type of measurement out there that you can get that will measure foot candles.
And do we have that machinery in place?
I don't know if we have one now. I don't know if Public Works has one.
Do you know what the cost of it is? I mean, is it something that is, is even?
I can get you the cost for, I can get you the cost for next time. It doesn't cost that much.
Is that in the budget, if you will?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's something we would certainly cover under our budget.
I mean, I think before you put it in here, you got to be able to measure it, and you got to have the equipment, tools to be able to do that.
Well, I can certainly get you the value of how much.
I'm sorry, I can't, I am not, no.
I can, yeah, I'm sorry, these things. I can get you cost on one of those for the next time.
Well, not so much that I care what it costs, but the city, the city has the ability to purchase that and is prepared to purchase that once this goes into effect, is what I was.
We have to have a way to enforce our.
Calibration requirements, shell, you know, all that, in fact.
And who knows how to operate it? I mean, is that something our, our public works department would take over working or operating?
Oh, I think we, I think we would do it. I basically used the foot candle measurement before. It's not that complicated.
Well, yeah, see, I'm totally ignorant of it, so.
Hey, Wally.
Yes.
This section is really laying out what needs to be turned into us on a site plan. It's not getting into the operations of us having to go and test it. Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, that is true. These are the requirements for a site plan. In other words, if they met the site plan requirement, their site plan would be approved. I think their question was getting to what happens if we get a complaint about it later, about there being excess light. Is it something that we can enforce?
Or not enough, for that matter.
Because we, because they are right. We don't want to make regulations we can't enforce. We can get back to this, you know, next month. I realize that I'm sort of hitting you with this all at once here.
Oh, this is purely, and just to let everyone know, this is purely a work session, so we are not going to make no decisional. Yep. No recommendations on it.
I was gonna say, I don't think I'm prepared to do that tonight.
Nope, not at all.
The only decision I'm going to ask you for tonight is to initiate it, and then we'll meet again next week to talk about it some more.
So with that being said, if there's any input or anything that we want to discuss, that, that certainly, this is a good time to do that while we're in the discussion phase.
And really, I didn't have a whole lot till we get to Article Two, which is on page 13 of 20. I'll have to park. Now, this is where we really sort of get into the act of complying with state code. And I know Mr. Mullins has probably looked at this, and he's not here tonight. But I have had the city attorney, Mr. Moore, take a look at this, too. When we get into the site plan classification, this preliminary and development plan thing gets a little bit sticky, because the way the state is regulating it from here is that basically until you hit 50 lots, any kind of preliminary plan, whether it be a preliminary plat or preliminary site plan, is not required. Now, we do have to leave open the option. If somebody wants to pursue it, they can. So that's what we've done here. So, so really, a preliminary site is required for a site plan covering more than 50 lots, and is optional for site plans encompassing less than or equal to 50 lots. You're never going to get a site plan over 50 lots, I don't think, unless it was legacies, townhomes, and things like that. It's going to be hard to do, because obviously, there'll be a lot of land involved.
Wally, what's considered a lot? Is there a specific measurement or is it?
Well, it's, it's, it's basically a single property under a simple ownership of one person. Like, like where you, if, if you have a mortgage on your house, that is a lot.
It's one lot, okay.
That whole property, yes.
Yeah, Wally, in our zoning, we have like R2, R3, R4. And that would donate how many, the houses that you could put on a size of a different lot? Like if it's R2, then it's only two houses per acre or something like that.
It dictates a lot size.
Yeah.
Lots can be anything, but when you're talking about 50 lots, it could be, if you had R50, God knows what you'd have, but, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but, but residential single families are typically not considered site plan. Now, if somebody cut up the property 50 ways for like a townhome or apartments, that would be something that we would regulate in the site plan. Which is why we tried to differentiate on lighting, multifamily. Multifamily, townhomes are considered multifamily.
They are considered multifamily? Townhomes are?
They don't have to be multifamily, but they're, you have more than one family in a unit. You might have six.
Each unit is a single-family unit. They're just attached. They're not like a.
They're single-family units.
Which are all in one building, basically.
Or, or a lot over in one building.
So it would be required in a subdivision development, is what you're saying? Because it's multi, it's considered multifamily?
Well, if it's multifamily, they're going to have to do a site plan. Have they? They're sort of going to be doing both, really.
Well, that's why I was trying to get that distinction between, I don't consider single-family attached as multifamily from my perspective, but I don't know what the city's, obviously, the city considers it multifamily. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay.
One, one other thing that I would just like to comment on that I'm a bit quiet. I noticed that throughout this, you have, you who have deleted the city manager, accepted by the city manager, and inserted a zoning administrator.
Yes.
And that gives me a little bit of concern, like, shouldn't it say zoning administrator or someone designated? Or, because further down here, it says zoning administrator or his designated representative? I would like for that to be consistent, that the zoning administrator and/or his designated representative.
It's funny you mention that, because I had that basically all through this article or authorized designate. But one of the powers that a zoning administrator has is the power to delegate someone else. So that's why I decided not to leave it in there all the time.
Now, where, where is that written? That the zoning administrator has that power?
Well, that would probably be in the zoning ordinance, like the power.
Okay. Okay. So, okay. Well, then, why is it placed in here or designated representative?
I don't really know why it's placed there and nowhere else, to be honest with you. I really don't.
Because that's one thing that just kept popping out at me as I read through this previously.
It is, it is.
I, I don't.
It is kind of a strange one. I'm not sure I have a good answer.
Perhaps even just a footnote, you know, that the designate, that the zoning administrator or designated appraiser would be appropriate.
You know, that's a good idea. Maybe under definition of zoning administrator, which we have a definition for, plan approving agent or, or designate. Maybe I should put it into the definition of zoning.
I would be comfortable with that.
What was the driver for that, going red light?
Well, because the zoning administrator is actually the position that's responsible for administrative, not just the zoning ordinance, but site plan ordinance as well. Zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator may not always be the city manager, although he is now.
But he may not always be the zoning administrator, assuming that he loses a position. And the zoning administrator position is not filled.
We hope that it doesn't happen, but that's true.
Well, no, no, but perhaps it's not filled, and it takes six months to fill it.
Well, the city manager always acts as a zoning administrator if that position is vacant.
Okay. Okay. That's written somewhere as well.
It is.
Okay.
All right, let's see here. Okay, so. Maybe, maybe what I'll do for the next time is in Article Two, just kind of make it clear all the lots and wherefores, because there is a lot. But basically, what it's doing, it's preparing a site plan for being able to be administratively approved. Whereas right now, if you look at our language right now in the code, it talks about it going to city council. Well, that hasn't been required for years, and we haven't done that. So, 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 just trying to follow the state here. That's really what it comes down to. Yeah, and, and as you say, I cross out a lot of city managers, put in zoning administrator. I see that. Appeal.
Hi, Wally.
Yes, go ahead.
Question. The, the development plan for the townhouses that Franklin did there down off Wood Creek Road, wasn't it Franklin? John Franklin did the Wood Creek Road, or was it, it wasn't? The townhouse, opposite.
Village Park, the new ones, or the ones.
Not the new ones, behind the wash car, the car wash, but further down on the left, around the little lake, and they kind of.
On Firth?
Huh?
Firth Lane down there?
No, no, no. Opposite side of the road of Wood Creek. Those little townhouses that were put in, I thought John Franklin developed that, but I might be wrong. John, no, I'm telling you. Not, but, a but's because in place.
It's Village Park.
Village Park? Is that the name of it? Okay. How many units, do you recall how many units were in there?
I won't say. It's like.
Was it less than 50?
Yeah, that's why I lost it.
Way less than 50. So they were not required or would not be required to have any type of parking, lighting? Is that what I'm hearing?
They would not have to do a preliminary plan.
Site plan, but they would still have to have lighting.
Yes, they would still have to do a site plan. It just wouldn't be a preliminary.
That includes, I mean, lighting. I don't know what the ordinance is on.
If you look a little later in, in Section Two or Article Two, you'll see that there's some language in there that talks about all the requirements, the site plan requirements. For a preliminary plat is also going to be the same on final plat. So they have to comply with same regulations as a preliminary one. It's just, it's just that they don't have to go through the preliminary step. Doesn't mean they don't have to meet the requirements.
But, but, but there's no prescribed lighting plan for, or it would be, because you consider multifamily, never mind.
Yes, yes, that would be.
And because they still have to go through the site plan process, they just don't have to do the preliminary.
Right, right, exactly.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Exactly. The rest of the stuff, I did have Wayne put in the stuff under due dash 10 on page 19 of 20 for penalty.
What page on?
19 of 20. 19 of 20.
Read that again. A penalty?
Penalty, yes. I had our city attorney put in the wording for that. You'll see, we faded the code of G D a lot in that. And like I said, I'll have a more detailed printout for next time around, so that we can talk about each individual thing, but I just kind of wanted to run through it a little bit tonight, see who the planning convention was, favor of at least initiating action on it, and then I'll have a presentation the next time around.
A question.
Question before that, too.
That's what I was thinking, if the planning commission wishes, I mean, your wish is my command.
Hey, Wally, you got a question on two point oh nine certificates of occupancy?
Yes.
Is that just on new construction, or, or what? Because, you know, when houses are sold, and some of them in pretty bad shape, you wonder if they should be allowed in there, but I just was wondering about, I know that new construction usually requires that.
It would be new construction, yes, it would, it would be new construction, um, basically, unless they're, you know, okay with this ordinance, and, and they've, you know, gotten all their permits legally, they would be allowed to go through, and eventually work their way towards a certain...
Okay, so it's the completion of all the inspections, and therefore, at the end of all that, then you get the certificate of occupancy?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
As part of that, I will no doubt be, uh, myself, or maybe Thomas would be the lucky person, but, but one of us will go by there and make sure they've installed everything, according to what they were supposed to, and Laura gets involved on the...
Went to this already?
And Ken gets involved with the building, so we got a lot of eyes on it, so.
Hey, Wally, would you be able to provide, just so that we can visualize it, a sample of a photometric survey with that grid on there, just to say, this is what this is, yeah, that would be helpful, thank you.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Your question, because I'm new, I guess, but we're only looking at the things that's being changed here, right? Anything in blue or red is the only thing that we're, we're talking about.
Right, everything else is gonna stay the way it is.
Off the table, and it's not open for conversation at this point, right?
Well, it's all open for conversation, but I mean, if you're talking about, are the blue and the red really the only changes that we're talking about, yes, that...
I could just, I'm not gonna just pick something and start discussing it, if it's not red or blue?
Right, right, I would say that's correct, I, like I said, what we want to do, first of all, is just make sure that this ordinance is in step with state code, and, you know, it's clear, there will probably be some changes that will come at some point. There are for zoning, and there are for subdivision, so, there'll probably be a few in here, too.
Like on page seven of twenty?
And if you have any ideas, we would be born and happy to use.
Like page seven of twenty, minimum of off-street parking, I don't see any, any changes in there, other than city manager to zoning administrator?
Yeah, that, that's really it.
And then, so all of that is already in the ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions, or, or comments, or is there anything in preparation for the next work session that would help? I know Wally had mentioned having some kind of illustrations of what a foot candle, or half-foot candle looks like, that will be helpful, any other items to include in the packet for next time that might help visualize this more, any, any thing you'd like to see?
I, I just wanna, you mentioned about the authority of the city council of Pecoson to approve, impose valid conditions upon approval of any, and it's marked out special use permit, and then it's all put in conditional use permit, or special exemption, we evidently had those before?
Well, we call them conditional use permits here, they are basically synonymous with special exceptions.
It sounded like it, I just never heard of them.
But we've just, we just decided, you know, to put in what we call them, which is conditional use permits, it's really the same kind of permit.
Thank you.
Hey, Wally, I have a question, um, on page nine of twenty, um, right at the top, it, there's something that's crossed out, and then it says, no light fixtures shall exceed a height of thirty feet, and then it goes into like the, the parking layouts of the stalls and the width, um, but there's nothing in the previous page of seven dash twenty, um, of requirements for the lighting, so is that something that when the lighting engineer does the design, we take what they put as what it should be, or can we say, well, no, you have thirty lights, and you really need this many in order to adequate, like, are there any rules surrounding what that looks like, or what it should be, like it's laid out for the parking?
Well, I think what we would want to have on a photometric plan, we would certainly want, um, we want lighting that was uniform enough over the whole parking area, where you don't have, you know, dark spaces, or exceptionally dark spaces, you're always gonna have darker spaces, uh, so I think that's what we'd be looking for, is, is more of a uniform type, type of coverage, um, but if we saw a photometric plan, for example, that was very bright in one area, and then, like, there was one row of parking that was extremely dark, uh, then, you know, obviously, that would not be what we're looking for, we're looking for more of a uniform type of thing.
And does this, this covers non-parking areas, like, does this cover sidewalks and other areas, and as well?
They would cover, well, sidewalks within the right of way, so they would typically are gonna get to lighting the street.
Okay.
But if there were some sidewalks that were like, you know, going through the site, then certainly we'd want those lit as well.
And that would be all part of the photometric plan?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna have thirty-foot-high things when you get to like football stadiums, baseball fields, and stuff like that?
Well, that's sort of a, that's sort of a different animal.
Yeah.
I guess it is a non-residential use, but, but typically, your stadium lighting is, is, uh, is, is not regulated under a lighting ordinance, and maybe we ought to state that, Thomas, uh, you have some experience with football stadium lights and that sort of thing?
Well, I don't think for that, I, I don't think in those situations, we'd require a site plan anyway, so I wouldn't have to adhere to this ordinance.
Yeah, it's just, uh, strong when you say, no lighting shall be over thirty feet.
Well, that's speaking to off-street parking and, and projects that need to have a site plan per the ordinance.
You make a good point about that.
Any other comments?
Uh, a question, the photometric map, uh, do you want me to just bring one big one that everybody can kind of look at, or you want me to try to reduce it downs?
You know, not having seen one, I don't know how well they reduce down and still be legible, don't they?
I think they'll, I can get you a full-size one.
Yeah, and what, if, if, if you can email...
Or I might be able to make a slide of it.
We can make a slide, we can play with.
Kind of by the engineer, with, uh, the...
It is, it's usually a lighting engineer.
It's a lighting engineer.
Now, a company like AES, uh, they pretty much do it all, so, yeah, it just sort of depends.
Yeah, I'd like to see one.
Yeah, we'll have one, we'll have some slides next time. Yeah, we've got one for Darton Drive, we've also got one for my legacy, we've got several of them, so.
See, so is this project on target? I'm not, change the subject, can I not talk about that?
Well, let's see, any other, um...
You're questioning me.
I know, I, I digressed, I should have.
Laura, was your hand up, were you, oh, okay, sorry, any other questions about the work session topic?
Because they will discuss again next month, but I'm just asking for you to...
Yes, I think, I think this is great, I think, um, yeah, we can go forward, there was a good suggestion to have a work session, um, and then, as always, if anybody has any questions between now and then, or thinking about it during dinner, just email over. Thank you.
Am I right, that the next planning...
Yes, yeah, I wanted to bring that up, so your next meeting would have normally been on the twentieth of June, uh, because of the holiday and city offices being closed, the next meeting will be on Thursday, June twenty-third, um, I, deadline for that meeting is this Friday, um, and other than this, I don't anticipate, um, another topic of discussion, um, so we'll probably plan on having, uh, probably a six, six-thirty work session, seven o'clock, regular meeting, so that'll be Thursday, June twenty-third.
So we would have a work session for one more review of this, and then have it up for, um, public hearing?
That's right.
It's gonna be on Thursday, June?
Thursday, June twenty-third.
Okay.
Six-thirty work session, seven o'clock, regular meeting.
Is that gonna give us enough time, thirty minutes, you think?
The work session extends, we can, we can, it, it really, I, I won't say it doesn't matter, but if the work session takes a little longer, that's okay, as long as the work session doesn't end early, and we start the meeting earlier, then we advertise, then we're in trouble.
Okay.
But I'm sure if I can get a vote on the initiation, just in case.
You bet, all right, so, is anyone prepared to make a motion to, um, initiate the changes contained within this work package? Second?
Second.
It's not necessarily recorded, but as much as it is just your concurrence amongst the board members, so, you know, you can indicate that by shaking your head, or just, unless anybody has any reservations about it, we'll move forward.
Okay, sorry about that, then I, I concur.
It was more just consensus to do.
Sorry, yes, okay, I will not be so formal, yes, uh, consensus, um... Hey, looks like we can move on.
I'm gonna take that as ours, okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good, very good, okay, um, do you want me to answer a question?
Can I answer?
Yes, it sounds like we have taken care of all the business, so, yes, if there's any other, uh, comments that, that you would like to...
I was just curious to know, the, are we on, is that on target, or is there any delay?
Well, I think it's reasonably on target, um, they've, uh, you'll notice, they claim, from what I understand, that July of August, they're gonna start doing construction.
Oh.
In the meantime, they are grading the site for the apartments, so at least the sale of Franklin Johnson is proceeding. Page two and page three, we did a recon, I guess that we can have, and if they haven't already started, they're gonna start soon.
Well, they cleared four perimeters, so they, they're allowed to, the way this works is that they are given permission by me to clear their perimeter and install, install their E N S measures, um, and then, once I inspect, then they're allowed to, they're allowed to clear the interior portions of their site, so they've been given that permission, um, but they're simultaneously clearing this site, the legacy site, and they're also clearing Darton, it's the same company, so they're, they've got a lot of hands and a lot of cookie jars right now.
On your toes, right?
Huh?
You gotta be on your toes. Well, they need to be on theirs, one or the other, right, or both?
Uh, they have to be on theirs, um, because they, I've worked with them for many years, and they know how I work, so, I'm out there pretty frequently.
And what about, what?
They gotta mount a lot of stuff back there, but...
The fountains, where, where is that, what is, what's going on with that?
I got a lot of stuff back there, but I assure you that there is compliance, that's all that matters.
The fountains of Pecoson are the, the...
There's not much happening there now.
It's a, it's a song. Yeah, Bob Moses.
Bob Moses is...
Nothing has occurred on, on what we voted on?
So Bob Moses's property has the, is the lay-down yard for the forest mains, so you might see some, so you might see some activity there, there, Bob, Mr. Moses has allowed, um, the M E B contractor for H S D's contractor, M E B, to use part of his property as a way down, so that's why you're gonna see a little bit of activity there, there's no building there, it's just a lay-down yard for the forest mains.
He hasn't done anything with his property.
He's gotta get funding first.
He's gonna be back to us again.
Well, with that, is there any other, um, any other business? I think we are wrapped up, so with that, we'll go ahead and end a little bit early, and we will see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.